Well, thanks so much for taking the time. We're sorry we couldn't meet in person earlier this month. But I'm sure it's probably happened to you with a lot of folks. Just felt like it was probably the best thing to do to to cancel. So we'll start meeting in the few in person in the future real soon.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And thanks for being flexible enough to change it. It's been a bit wild with lots of meetings and meet and greets and forums and and just trying to learn about the city.
Well, if you don't mind, we have a list of questions for you and we'll just dive right in with. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you decided to run? And would you mind pronouncing your last name for us? Because we want to make sure we're getting it right, too.
Okay, well, starting with my last name, if you just remember three words, you've got it. My pet runoff.
Okay.
I know. Pet runoff. I was on a I was on a forum last night and every single time my name was not pronounced right. But it's it's a mouthful. I was a Davis, so it's it's still difficult. Well, it's all very.
Yes, as someone with a difficult last name who is very often mispronounced, I totally understand and feel your pain.
Thanks. Well, I Petrunoff. I have three generations of my family here. I started coming here in two thousand and eight and like ninety percent of people, you come here, you buy a condominium. You stay for a couple of months, you go back up north and and you go down. And I just kept adding month after month after month. My father passed away and we moved my mother from an area that was not great in Chicago and moved her into the condo and bought a home. And since then, my sister and husband came and my niece just moved here in two thousand and twenty one. So it has a has a way of sucking people in, including my campaign treasurer, who is an ex GE guy and a a person that I had not really worked with. But through a mutual friend, I lent her my condo. And she and her husband came, were going to buy in Sarasota. Within twenty four hours, they put a deposit on a house yet to be built in a in a in a place where it had not broken ground yet. That was Isles of Collier. So she knew Harry. So it's a this has grown and grown. And through this campaign, I've found that there are a lot of people from GE and Ford that call Naples home. So we love it. My my I went to University of Illinois. I grew up, I moved, I think, eight places since I was a kid and then eight more places when I was with GE. I spent my whole career at GE. And but most of the time I spent growing up in northeastern Ohio on Lake Erie. And this is where, I guess, a differentiator, the environmental and the water really is. It really is in my DNA. My dad has had a couple patents or has a couple patents. And for water, clean water. And we were the only Girl Scouts not allowed to swim in Lake Erie when we went to Girl Scout camp. We're we're very mad about it at the time, but I think I thank him now. So I clean water is really important because you can see what happens when it's not. And we, you know, that forms really the first part of what I want to be able to do. And I think the city council is focused on the right things. Those outfall pipes dump untreated water where we all swim. And, you know, I read some of the bacterial reports and the plus fertilizer. It is not a healthy environment to be done. They they rework them. It's taken longer, I think, than what they had intended. But I think they've got it right. And I want to be part of that because they still need to get the baseline measurements in place. I think that's important because we're spending millions of dollars on the removal. We need to be able to say, this is where we were, this is why this is it worked and this is what the measurement is. The second part of it is is cleaning the lakes. And some of those lakes, I've been told, have not, I think Jimmy Hoffa's in one of them, have been cleaned in forty years. And they, I think, six of they exacerbate our bays and they exacerbate the Gulf of Mexico. Mooring's Bay, you know, became impaired. It's worse up north. And those lakes contribute to it. They're supposed to serve two functions. They have, they're supposed to absorb the rainwater, those heavy rains we get in the summer. And then they filter into waterways. And they are so full of muck in some cases that they're not performing either function. And they, again, one one lake is completed, one lake. So we need to figure out a strategy to do them more quickly. There is an experiment that just kicked off. It's a chemical experiment to clean them versus the very expensive, very long dredging. But it's in it's in our capex, so it's not like the money is not there. We we just need to deliver. So that is the that's the, you know, the first piece is that's extremely important to me. The other piece is overdevelopment. And I need to clarify this. You know, when people hear that, they think, oh, anti-development, anti-business, anti-anti, you know, whatever. That is simply not the case. But I do believe that we are almost at a saturation point in this city. And they do that a lot in a lot of towns. We have not done it yet. We should be taking a hard look at within our codes and within our building. What where can we grow? And where, you know, you can go up forty one and see a ton of areas that should be redeveloped. A lot of buildings, a lot of structures. And I think that is more of what I think we would be focusing on. Our redevelopment, just because, you know, our where our buildings are. And I don't think so that is really not, and it's not frozen in time. It's it's a dynamic, but it's all about sustaining what residents and local business owners have told us was important. That's encapsulated in the city vision. And it is, they want what's called small town charm, which is a very difficult definition, especially when you're going up to Venetian Village and they're all in high rises. But there are principles to it, and it's where you it's preserving gathering spots. It's where people are connected together. It is appropriate setbacks. And you see this in Venetian Village, and I've asked friends that live there, they they feel like they have small town charm there. They are walking across the street and they are going to the the two malls. Those malls don't have a big parking garage in front of them. They are not enclosed. You get pretty water views. So I think that definition varies by neighborhood, and I think we need to honor that. The other piece of it is being able to look relook at the comp plan. You know, I was saying it was they're they're doing minor changes to it, mostly legal changes in the last few years. The comp plan hasn't been really completely modernized since nineteen ninety eight. And I gave the example in in last night that that was the year Google was founded. So that is a long time ago. And there are things in that comp plan that make no sense anymore. For example, Duane redid was the architect behind Fifth Avenue years ago. And in that, they he had recommended zero setbacks. And and I get why he did that. He was thinking retailers. And and as people walk on the street, then it helps the retailer if they can see merchandise in the window. But now there are a lot of restaurants and every single restaurant wants what? Outdoor dining. So you we need to have, we need to change those and have the flexibility to deliver different setbacks to accommodate different businesses. And that's just one example. Second one is there's ambiguity in some of those codes. For example, where does a building begin? We know we we have the charter height of forty two feet, but where does it begin? Currently, it's whatever is in the discussion. And in the PD and in the request, it could be Crown of Rowan, FEMA FEMA plus three, FEMA plus nine. And so we need clarification on that for for the surrounding residents and and for the developers. So that that so that that piece of development is and not overdevelopment is important to me. The third piece is really a technology piece. It was not called out in the surveys that were done to local businesses and and residents. However, safety was. And we really, we have three people that are in our technology department. One is the AV person that holds the meetings, and there and there are two others. We outsource our database to a company called Softrim. Softrim has notified us that they want us to find a new provider, want the city to find a new provider. And it's a perfect opportunity to take a look at where our data is housed and harden that. Because, you know, if they're breaking into huge government agencies and Citibank and other big entities, they can break into our city. And we need to that we have social security numbers in there. We have our credit card information, bank account information to pay our bills. We need to make sure that we're safe. We also aren't taking advantage of some of the traffic management tools. And I was talking to some traffic experts, and this experiment is going on up north. And what came out of talking to every neighborhood was safety was sometimes defined as crossing the street. They feel they feel like people are blowing off stop signs. They feel like there's a lot of speeders. And this was in five different neighborhoods that I went in. There are tools out there that can detect somebody coming down the road. And when and on the crossway, it can hold the red light because it's detecting this person is probably going to blow through this intersection and keep you safe. It can also do things like traffic rerouting, et cetera, et cetera. So those are really my my priorities. I want to run for council because I love this town. I have great business experience. I ran a two billion dollar business. I know I know how to manage change. I know how to manage a P and L. I've managed large groups of people. It it is never an I. It is always a we. When I go to, I don't know if you've ever been to council meetings. Do you do all go on them?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And I and this is my personal, this is my personal opinion. But sometimes I feel like I'm in those meetings and it is a city staff v. city council. And I don't believe that that serves residents and the community well. We should be working better together. And I think that we should be able to, for example, the agenda process and that the whole the the meeting process. That needs to be workshopped specifically. And you have to do it in the sunshine, big deal. So you film it. There it's a there's a lot of items on there. I I actually tracked it right before Christmas. And they received a thousand pages. On Wednesday, they received a four hundred page supplement on their Friday night. They were expected to read through that and make votes on that on Monday. And I think that it could lead to suboptimal decisions for us. It also leads to frustration because you're going to be reading material. And I acknowledge this, that I'm not going to understand. I'm going to need to go to the experts and city staff and say, what do you mean by this? And there was no time for to ask questions. And so those questions then have to be asked in the meetings and they drag on and on. And I think that creates unnecessary friction. So that that is one item that should be reworked. Another, I believe, is stormwater management. And I had a I had a resident chew my ear off. I'm not even on council yet. And I he said this, this inspection process does not work. We are we are expected, we we had an expectation, we're going to pay five hundred dollars for this. My stormwater expect system was going to be inspected. And he had contacted seven suppliers. And the price was five hundred dollars plus plus some hourly rates to be determined, all the way to five thousand dollars. And whenever I got bids like that at GE, that always told me that I did not send the criteria out properly. They didn't know what they were bidding on. They were going to be doing different work. And further, he told me that all of those prices did did not include a lifting of the grate. So what the heck were they looking at? The grate, you know, that what 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 are what is he paying for? And I'm glad he brought it up. He was very angry about it. I think there's a meeting next week about it, and I'm glad he brought it up. So I, you know, went back and I made Terry Hutchinson go out and visit him. And because he and he got ahold of, I think, Andy Holland to relook at this process. But, you know, this my thinking one step above this is we shouldn't be rolling out processes without thinking through the whole thing. If we're going to have good stormwater codes and we're going to have street cred that this is important to keep clean water, we ought to have the whole process laid out in advance. And, you know, further, they, you know, for a while there, they couldn't find suppliers to even come out and bid on that. So that is a that is something that we can work collaboratively on with with the city staff.
Good. Thanks. Appreciate that. You talked a little bit about city staff, and obviously, there's been some some significant departures from city staff and some challenges from that standpoint. Do you have a kind of an idea of how you'd like to try to go about rebuilding staff or types of staff? Or how do we keep staff, retain staff for the city?
Yes, I do. We on council, you know, they only hire three people. They're only that that is their their mission is, you know, city clerk, I think, city attorney, and then the city manager. And that city manager should be top priority because she or he hires everyone else. And and I believe that I personally believe that if we have to pay more money to get a really talented leader, not administrator, a good leader, then that would be money well spent. And I further, I think that we ought to be that ought to be lined up already. And I was shocked when last week, no, this week, I got a survey as a resident that asked me, what do I want to look for in a city manager? My gosh, I mean, how how long has this job been open? I mean, why are you asking now? What and and this is a kind of a funky process anyway. I would have thought that the day that some the new person is seated, that they would have a whole bench of people with resumes that are ready to ready to roll because that is a key position. This person is the umbilical cord between city staff and and city council. And it's key. They they're a great communicator. That's bar none. But they also need to be a good team developer. And, you know, when there there should be bench strength so that when someone takes a gets a promotion or quits, there's good and there's bad attrition. And I believe there's both. They're they're both went on in the city. And then in some cases, I don't have a view on that. But there should be people behind them to take their spot. And and that should be part of the rigor of of being of being on city, being responsible and a manager. That's just a, you know, that's just a no brainer. They it was shocking to me, too, that I don't believe they had criteria measurements and they never have on evaluating a city manager. Can you believe that? They didn't have they didn't have criteria on on the most important job in the city. And so how are you? How are how is he or she going to know what is the top priority? What what are they being evaluated on? And we should be mapping all that out so that and that should lead into job descriptions for replacements. And maybe that's why they're struggling with this. But I am I am a little surprised. I was a little surprised when I got that email. The other piece is I might as well go into the union piece because it it it's a huge narrative in town. And there was a big narrative about safety, and I think that's been somewhat dispelled with, you know, statistics. Although, you know, safety perceptions are reality. But we do have holes in the organization. I know you can even, it can be dangerous to use averages. Twenty percent is a vacancy rate. I don't believe it should be that in Naples because it's to be a policeman down here is a it's a it's a good gig, or it should be. We love our police. We love our law and order. We love that Fifth Avenue windows weren't broken broken out. We love that they lined up and they would not let those people march into the city and and do what they've done in other big cities. I know a lot of Southside Chicago cops that they all took early retirement. They would love a job down here. And the piece that I am struggling with is I believe that we should abolish that clause that prohibits us from paying talent that and experience from up north and other places into our city. They can only be paid the beginning salary. And I think there's ways around it. I actually talked with some people from the airline industry on how they've gotten around it. And they could still get not be credited for continuity of service. So if someone is aspiring to be a sheriff and they have been in the job for ten years, that that would still be honored. But you could pay for experience because I I heard that a policeman left who had ten years of experience in Illinois. And he was on the force for just a bit in Naples and then a job opened up in Collier County that allowed a payment pay for experience and and he left. And and that's great for him, but it's bad for residents. So we need to address that piece, but they have a fair point. They they were they were pigeonholed into certain into raises. And I think it was in one point nine percent a year that that did not keep up with inflation. And this year, we just got hammered with inflation. We should be having better measurements and benchmarks to call up to to cost of living adjustments or some benchmark to inflation so that they don't get behind year after year. And this went on for eleven or twelve years. We need to have that this would create more durable policies that would last way, way longer than anybody sitting on council today. And that's only fair. And I think we need to bump these people up to market. And maybe if you're looking at quartiles, maybe we should be looking at the third quartile, given our how expensive it is to live here. So those are those are some ideas that I have on that. But this is where I'm very different. I I believe that council sets policies. The unions, we need to work with the unions and the police service well. But when we're setting policies, we are setting policies for the community on the other side of the table from the unions. When you're talking compensation, we need to have good relationships with us, but be mindful of exactly where we are seated.
Very good.
Great. Thank you. You sort of talked a little bit about your approach to redevelopment earlier. But can you talk a little bit about how you balance that with, you know, the residents' desire for and businesses to the quality of life concerns with the needs of the business community as it relates to things like redevelopment, housing, that type of thing?
Well, I think that on the redevelopment side, there are there are areas that do need to be redeveloped. Like when you look at forty one ten, for example, I don't know how much you've been involved with that that project. It's pretty exciting. There's going to be a lot redeveloped there. And that is a lot of opportunities for businesses. But one of the tenants of what I'm running for is it cannot it cannot be intrusive to neighbors. It cannot, you know, it should be within codes, but there's some reasons why you would grant variances. Or if if we didn't, if we didn't, if we weren't, if we shouldn't have variances, then we shouldn't even look at them if it's a zero zero policy variance. And there are good reasons why you would give variances. So I think that just needs to be balanced, but it needs to be reasonable and not hurt property values of the surrounding neighbors. And it's a it's a balancing act. And that's a that is what I am all about is is having a good balance.
That's a good point. Obviously, the Naples of today is has evolved a lot from Naples, maybe the nineteen sixties or seventies. And in good ways, we've seen a lot of things that have transpired that have made us into the community that we look at today that we love. Lot of new people, a lot of new residents have come down in the area here, and it continues to be a very popular place to be. Maybe it's trying to figure out how do you deal with all those? Whether it's issues of density, whether it's issues of of trying to figure out how do you how do you work within those those needs of the community or of the of the property owners. Florida has some pretty strong property ownership rights in it. And and maybe talk a little bit about, you know, we talk specifically about whether it's the NCH project where the Athens Group project, Naples Beach Hotel. How do you how do you view those kind of things as a part of the evolution of our of our community?
Well, on the NCH project, you know, I gave this analogy time and time again. Having a world-class heart center, no one is going to say that's not a good thing. It's like saying you don't like puppies. Everyone wants this in the community. I mean, it's just a it's a thing that you want to do. I look forward to seeing their plan. The the initial plan that I saw, if I am understanding this correctly, I think they 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 put forth a plan that allowed them to to possibly build over hundred-foot buildings across that campus, which was not their intention. And I believe this, they, you know, I I just believe we need to work together to be able to figure out how we're going to do this. I also don't necessarily believe it needs to be a hundred feet high, if I am understanding what their first ask was. And it was they they need to have an operating room, and that is usually a one floor. And I've checked with Mayo Clinic and Stanford and some places in New York. It typically is one floor. Some people internally said they were planning on having it be one-floor operating rooms. Those need to be fourteen feet to accommodate the new robotics. And that makes a lot of sense to me. Don't know if you need fourteen-foot heights for patients' private rooms. Don't know if you need fourteen-foot heights for the doctor's office visiting consulting after the after surgeries. So I think I think we just need to come together and figure it out because there it it's sort of like cleaning up the water. Everyone wants it. But we need to sit down and and map it out on how you're going to do that without hurting people. And that that makes sense to me. On Athens Group, I actually live on South Gulf Drive, and it was it's across the street from the Athens Group. And I I think that the challenge is the and what has caused so much agitation is that there were a lot of meetings in the that were at the golf club. And the narrative was changed with every meeting. It was going, you know, the initial meeting was with the golfers and and they were told, we're going to retain this champion golf course and you're going to have, you're going to be able to get memberships to join. Then it was like, well, you're not, but we'll help you find it. Then it was, we're not going to have eighteen-hole championship. We're going to have ten holes. And so, you know, these people take, people down here especially, take things at their word. And when they change, it creates friction. I have a friend who builds hotels and he actually gave Jay Newman feedback saying, you are your own worst enemy. And I think Jay has acknowledged that. You know, so I think he puts ideas on papers, but they're not in and he and he truly believes, you know, okay, these are just ideas. And then they they become, people take them at their word and they get really upset. I think my property, I I have I own four properties on South Gulf Drive. I think it is going to tremendously help me personally when they get a when they get a Four Seasons here because they are beautiful properties. And I'm looking, I'm looking right outside at my in my front. And there are a lot, there are probably one-third bushes there and the rest are dead. Four Seasons would never allow that. I'm going to be looking out on something beautiful. I the second piece, I'll say, is and and this is more on the city. We, I would never have done this deal and I would have been fired at in my job if I had negotiated this deal where we give entitlements in writing. And and then we give a verbal, we get a verbal promise in exchange for the grand bargain of more height and density for preserving the green space. And so now we, the city has hired, I don't know how many attorneys, to sort of hammer out this oral deal on the green space because they have it in writing. It's like, if you have quid pro quo, it should either all be verbal, which I don't like, or it should all be hammered down in writing. And I think they separated those or they allowed them to be separated, and it's become problematic. But I guess that I guess they've they're pretty close. It'll be nice when it's done. It'll be nice when the deal is done and they can communicate what is happening and we can all move on. I think everybody is really tired of it.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't think we had, Michael, unless you had anything else, we didn't have any other questions. I think we've touched on everything on our list. Oh.
Maybe one other question. So so in just a little bit, obviously, Naples sits within Collier County. And and there are those interactions between the city and the county and and some of the things. How do you how do you see yourself? How do you, how do you uh see yourself as you go forward if you if you're elected in working with the the county?
Well, I think we um, you know, I thought a lot about this because I was knocking on doors in Royal Harbor and Oyster Bay, and they are absolutely flipping out over the Davis Triangle. And the trap, they said, oh, my God, it's already taking twenty minutes to get over the bridge into the city. And now what is it going to take? Because their their height limits are one fifty. And they are putting, I believe, six buildings on there. It's going to be different. Plus, you know, if you go down Davis, that is ripe for redevelopment. It is just ripe for redevelopment, and it's going to get worse than better. Um, I um, the city told me they were caught off guard at what was proposed, and I think that is unacceptable. We need to work together with the city, particularly at our boundaries. And um, uh but I believe that we, I have a strong belief, we we have the right to self-determine. We have set what we want for codes and buildings, et cetera, and we uh we should honor that. Um, for example, I've got a couple ideas on this is um harmonize if if working with the cit- with the county, try to harmonize our codes uh better at at our gateways. So for example, can we get the county to go down on the density a bit as they approach the town so that it doesn't look like we are um Central Park? We become a Central Park surrounded by giant buildings. Um, we uh they like have a transitional code, if you will. Um, other things are traffic, which is uh, you know, already problematic in season. And um people are already cutting up over to um Goodlet Frank to go around. I think that we at Golden Gate should be able, should work with the county to be able to more formally push people through traffic onto Goodlet Frank, and so that forty one becomes more of a local road. We also need to work more closely with F doc because it's still on the radar screen to do a lane diet. And I don't know if you know what a lane diet is. Okay, I think that's a bad, bad idea um for forty one. I think that's a horrible idea. And um uh it it has been brought up, people have said loud and clearly they don't want it. But it's still, it's still rolling around up there, and we must kill it. Um, because it's just not gonna work. Um, a another piece that we should be working more with the county is the the whole notion of affordable housing. And I noticed on your website, you have a tab on there on affordable housing, which I think it's gonna be very difficult, given our land values and the scarcity of our land that's left to have more affordable housing in Naples. I think, uh, you know, it it might be a sin to say, but I think because we have to work jointly with the county and and get some workforce housing there um out there. Um, just the laws of economics is going to put it out there. And it's not, you know, we're not talking about our commute. It's a, I think they're reasonable commutes that that can be done. And we are, we are not, um, I don't think we're working as closely as we can with the county on that. But it is, it is a great meet. I spoke with um a someone at FGCU that's in Health and Human Services. I don't know if you you work with Dr. Felke about what is, what is the need and, you know, the need is growing. Um, the um uh there, no one has found a solution. There's some creative partnerships that that were established across the country. One of the interesting ones was in Sanibel. And you can imagine, Sanibel is is gonna be a tougher issue because they're going to cross a causeway. And so they found a, it's it started with a a public or private foundation to kick this off. And um they pay a certain percentage of their salary uh to work in the in in Sanibel, and they're they're working at grocery stores. It's not just city employees. The first responders, yes, but it's also grocery stores, et cetera. What I don't believe, I think that government makes a crappy landlord. And I I do not believe in those kinds of projects. I believe that may maybe we own the land and we have a very attractive lease rate and have have a private solution.
Sure.
Um, and I guess um uh the last thing I say about county and 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 city um is this Army Corps of Engineers proposal.
Hmm.
Um, I I'm very worried about it because it's um uh it's it's going to kill some of the people a little bit up north with the with the gates and the um some of the their proposals were only a partial solution. They left certain air certain um areas of the city out of this. It was a couple billion dollars and counting, and I think they're repricing it. And it created like fourteen-foot walls, sea gates, that I would rather go with um more natural solutions, doom solutions. Um, I I don't, I don't know how how reasonable it is for barrier islands, um replanting mangroves, um making sure they're not killed off by pollution. Um, but those are, it's still in the hopper, and we wanna kill it. The county hasn't killed it yet. They have, they've, they've chosen to continue um with studying it. And so I'm, you know, I haven't found a a a a definition, if somebody hasn't told me, who actually gets to make the decision on this? Who is the decision maker? And so as long as we have those differences, that um it's going to be a worry for for me and for the neighborhoods.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.